Hello.
Oh, we're muted.
You were muted.
So you couldn't hear us. Commissioner Pestinger, we were apparently muted. Could you go ahead and introduce yourself? You should be unmuted.
Hello, I can hear you now. Thank you.
That's probably why.
This is Commissioner Pestinger, District Five.
All right.
Uh, should we do redo introductions because the official record will not have that or can we just count that as done?
I think the official record will have that at that point.
Okay.
Um, and then we've got Commissioner Fishburne on the line as well. And. There he is.
Bill Fishburne.
That was him.
Yeah.
Bill Fishburne, one up.
The third one in the list.
Sorry, it's kind of hard to see from here.
It's great.
Look at that profile. So fancy.
Wow, all right, Mr. Fishburne, go ahead and.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Oh, good. Uh, Bill Fishburne, Commissioner District Four.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, with that. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Go move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion about the agenda? All right, um, all in favor of approving our agenda? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, our agenda is approved. Moving on to our approval of meeting minutes. You know, folks have had a chance to look that over. But I would entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five and accept the audio as the official meeting record.
Second.
Right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Passenger.
Okay, I'm trying to pull it up right now as we speak. Uh, it was one line, uh, about two-thirds of the way through. It was just kind of a not fully complete sentence. But it related to something I asked about, so I kind of wanted to review it real quickly. I just pulled it up. And the sentencing question is. Book on page three.
You have the line number?
Yeah, well, um. I mean, if I can get this wrong, it's further. Oh. Oh, guys, I'm not seeing it now. I'm looking at everything on page four. On page three. I don't see it, sorry.
All right. Okay. Any additional discussion before we call the vote? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the favorite meeting record?
Aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Okay, any opposed? All right, we have approved that motion and we will move on to public communications. And for those of you online, um, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll promote you, but we'll start here in case we've got any comments in the auditorium. Guessing we do not. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and promote, uh, Loretta first.
I will note that Betsy had her hand up originally. I wasn't sure if that was just a ref- reference of like that we didn't have that at that point.
Yeah, so anybody who would like to speak, go ahead and put your hand up, um, and we'll get to you, but we're going to start with Loretta.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Loud and clear.
Thank you, all right. Um, first off, I want to thank you for your discussion at the last meeting about changing the rural resource industrial in the development code. And I support the changes that staff outlined in their memo to you about limiting the rural resource industrial to just those industries that are related to agriculture, forestry, and mining. My main comments tonight I want to make about the housing chapter because it's one that you're going to be discussing tonight. And my comments come because I've been thinking a lot about for the year, last year and a half about the housing crisis and how Thurston County relates to that. More recently, your push to limit to five percent of all the new housing being in the rural area, which I greatly appreciate that you've done that. And then information that's quite related to that, that I found in the, as I'm reviewing the SEIS. There is a lot that relates to that five percent goal, including strategies that are not currently in the chapter that we have in front of us, in front of us. So. I know that housing is a a, a, a critical issue. And so that's why I'm thinking a lot about it. But I think that that's that our cities are the ones that have committed themselves to providing the housing across the economic spectrum to really meet the vast majority of all of our housing needs. And so what I'm thinking about is what's actually missing in our plan right now. And that is the whole issue about how we are going to have less space, less capacity for, uh, people who have the resources to put their house anyplace they want to, to build a house in the rural area. And that's all related to that five percent goal. If you take a look right now in, in the housing chapter, in the goals section, because I'll just talk about it from the goals point of view, is you'll see that our five percent goal is the very last goal. And is, as a matter of fact, is the very last sentence in the last chapter, I mean, at the very end of the chapter, the very last policy within the last goal. And I think it's time to kind of take a little biblical idea and have the last be the first. So I'd like to see that fifth goal move up to the first goal. And then I'd like to see the seventh policy, the very last sentence in the entire doc- uh, document, the housing document, move up to be um, the first policy under that last, that, that now first goal. And what that would mean would be talking about a policy statement that kind of needs to be strengthened from what's in there right now. And it should say simply implement rather than the word consider, that's the word that's in there right now, implement new strategies to reduce excess rural housing capacity. Those words are all in there, but I'm just shortening it. Implement new strategies to reduce excess rural housing capacity. And what does that mean to reduce hous- housing capacity? We need to make sure that there is not as much space in our vacant land to put houses on. And in the S I SEIS, there are about a half dozen or more strategies like land conservation, land lot reconfiguration and, um, treating the best farmland as critical areas in that document, and we should be pulling them in and bringing them next meeting into the implementation plan, those strategies. And the second goal, I'm going to just, just do this real quickly because I've run out of time, is, um, I would like to see a goal that's focused on Grand Mound, UGA, coordinating with the South County cities and one lammert, um, Madrona Beach lammert because it's got this, uh, Griffin School District, um, right next to it. And that goal should be focused around housing for, uh, rural employment, people who are employed in the rural area. Because those are the places where we can provide, where there will be low income, uh, people working in the rural area. And we can provide housing in those partic- particular districts. And I think we can reform some of the existing goals, drop out some of them, and make it focused around that housing for people who are employed in the rural areas, in those particular areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seppen. All right, um, I do see, um, I think Commissioner Passenger, you've got your hand up. Is that a legacy hand or did you?
It's a legacy hand. He's still top.
No, I'll take it down, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Um, next up, uh, looks like Kyler Danielson.
Hello.
Good to go.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Awesome. Uh, my name is Kyler Danielson. I work for, uh, Lakeside Industries, which, um, operates. Um, I'm buying an asphalt plant in Thurston County. Um, I was reviewing the language that is proposed for the rural resource industrial section of the code that is, um, on the agenda for today. And notice that the language, um, under section four, the following uses related to minerals has manufacture of concrete products. And throughout the rest of the code, when mo- most of the regulations that apply to concrete also are applied to, um, asphalt. And, um, as someone in the industry, the, um, impacts from concrete are of- often um, even more, uh, disruptive than the impacts to asphalt. And so um, I would recommend that that language be changed to be consistent with other sections of the code and include asphalt as well. And that is my comment.
Thank you very much. Very succinct. Anybody else on the line like to make public comment? Before we move on? All right, with that, we will close the public communications section of our agenda. And we'll move on to continued business where we have work session number thirty of the Thurston twenty forty-five.
So Maya's, it sounds like she's going to be here in a listening capacity, but she does have a sick little one at home, so she just hopped on. There we go. Well, everyone, um, more, more comp plan discussions. I can skip the pleasant reason, we can just skip right into the meat. Um, today we're going to keep working through chapters and discussing next step, next steps, excuse me. Um, so there were some public comments on the memo. Um, one thing that the memo also included was pros and cons and option for switching the order of the chapters. And so we can take some time to discuss that. Um, I know that last meeting, while I was not here, you all opted to discuss moving the climate chapter further up. And so Maya put this together showing the current order that we're in. The first option being a way to reorder the chapters and then a second option as well. Um, one thing to highlight is that while we are already going to have to do a deep scrub of this document after we receive all of your edits, um, before it becomes the final, final noticed public hearing draft, this will also be an additional lift. Um, there are quite a few cross references to chapters throughout the document, so taking that into consideration as well with whatever you all choose to do.
Can you scroll down so we can see the the full list?
Oh, that's weird. Why is it not?
It's, yeah, it's displaying a little funky. Maybe if we shrink the gallery down, oh, there we go. That works.
Okay.
Sorry, I just couldn't see the bottom.
You're fine. Is it too small? I feel like it's too small. Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Bartlett.
I guess so, man.
Uh, we'll go to Commissioner Bartlett and then we'll take your comment.
I, this is a, a kind of a question for all of us, I guess, but, uh, what is the timeframe that we want to have? I mean, that, that's relevant to this of like making sure that we submit all of our, our comments for this.
We, um, ideally would get those next planning commission, wrap it up and have everything done because we will need to take the last couple of weeks in March to do that overhaul of the document with all the different staff involved. Um, so that we can meet the deadline for noticing requirements for the hearings at the end of April.
That was my understanding, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Passenger.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Maya. This is really helpful information. Uh, I definitely lean towards option one. Uh, I'm just curious, uh, both of these, you move natural resources from chapter three down to chapter ten or twelve. I like all this, but with the exception, I think natural resources kind of has a better flow coming right after climate, land use and environment and before housing, so I would recommend it there for chapter five and then just slide everything else down below that. But other than that, I think it's great.
When you talk about the lift specific to moving the chapters around, um, I know that it's probably hard to estimate, but would that be the amount of work required for you to do that? Would that be like a, a four-hour job or a four-hundred-hour job?
I don't think it would be four hundred. It would ultimately be on me, Maya, and Amelia um, as the ones who have the most chapters involved. Um, I could see how it would require a little more thinking on our part to make sure we don't change the references incorrectly. Um. I do think it's also worth just food for thought that for the most part, when community members are interacting with this document, they're going to the chapter that interests them more so than reading it like book. But by no means do I want to restrict you all from changing things, should you.
What, would you characterize it as nominal or is this a pretty heavy lift to move these chapters?
It's hard to do a search and find. Yeah. Like it's not a simple search and find, so you're really, you're taking a very large document and you have to read every chapter, making sure. Um, and so it's not that it won't be done by the time we get to the board. I think just some grace, like if you pick option one, grace from the planning commission, I'm like, yeah, there's probably going to be some wrong references in there and just send them to us as you find them. Make it a team effort if you want to make that many changes.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Yeah, uh, I, I appreciate that. I think, uh, there's some advantage to rego- like, go, having now spent more time with it, there's some advantage to going over it again on all of our parts. So I can see that being, being a little bit of a, of, of benefit. Um, I was curious, uh, uh, about that, that move, if there was this, like about the natural resources move, if there was a specific reason for it, um, if it made sense to move it in a specific way and that's why it had been done.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think really Maya was just thinking strategically and moved things around. Um, I don't want to speak for her, but I would assume knowing, knowing Maya and working with her that it was just what made sense in the way that she was doing things, but I don't think there's any restriction whatsoever to doing it otherwise.
Uh, my final, my final comment on that was just, uh, that, uh, I think that you're absolutely correct, uh, in the sense that people are going to go to the spot that they're interested in. However, I also am really interested in the Thurston County's, uh, document being something that is going to be, I think, uh, because of the work that we've all put into it, it's going to be a reference for a lot of other counties. We're, we're kind of on the cutting edge of a lot of cool stuff on this. And I wanted to, that, that, those people will be reading it front to back, uh, and I think that having a good framing document is important.
Mr. Oliver. I, I have really no opinion on either option. I just wanted to state that, you know, I I've gone through this many times over the last six years with different documents to including the S and P, and I know how much of a lift it actually is. And I don't know that doing this is really that necessary. I'm just making that as a comment. I don't have an option either way. Whatever you all want to do, whatever the Dory wants to do, but I just want to make that point that this is more of a lift than either one of them is stating. And I've been there, I've done that. All of the S and P was probably a larger document than this. It is still a huge thing to do.
A compromise could be shifting the timing of it. So still giving us your preference, but having us implement it when we get to the board, which would give us a lot more time than trying to do it in a very compressed timeline by April first.
What I, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
What I noticed about both of these is that, um, it appears to me that, that an effort was made to put climate at the top, but leave many of the other chapters in the same order as they originally are. And, and I wonder if that limits the amount of effort it takes to make this change. If, you know, if, if you swap climate and, uh, natural resources, is it only those two chapters that have to change? Or is it references all throughout?
It would be references all throughout because if chapter nine references natural resources as.
Not really. If you can throw them in the air and pick them up in any order, it's the same amount of work.
The historic resources has a lot fewer cross references though, so moving it is less impactful, which I think is why it was picked to go last. Commissioner, Sue.
I, I, I think that, that making these changes, as Commissioner Pestinger suggested, it would be a really good idea, but I do like the idea that that it is not necessary for us to bring it to our public hearing with those in that particular order yet, maybe put a note in there saying that these are subject to change a little bit, but by the time it's ready to be handed off to the board to make sure that those changes were made, I think that would be a pretty appropriate thing and probably easy enough, easier to do.
And there's a lot of other changes happening, so you're already in that chapter.
So that could all be done in that one big final scrub. I, I would personally be fine with that.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Uh, yeah, I, I, uh, support that specifically if we, if we note that we're doing it in that order. Uh, or like the order that we determine, if we just have a little note right at the beginning, like this is going to be the future order, this is the order they're in now. Um, I would, I would support that and I would move towards that.
Yeah, I don't think the public would, would be upset about that. It doesn't substantively change the content.
No, the, the public will know that our public hearing draft is subject to change anyways because we, I mean, our public hearing yet. We could even use it as an opportunity to see if people like the idea of reordering them.
So option one. But moving natural resources up. So climate, land use, environment, natural resources, housing, transport.
Yeah.
That bumps utilities. Basically, it requires every chapter to.
Do we, do we vote on that?
I have an alternate option.
Um, go for it.
I would like to create an option three. Starting with chapter one, the intro, moving climate to chapter two. Uh, moving land u- land use to number three. Moving environment to number four. Moving natural resources to number five. Moving health to number six. Housing to number seven. Transportation to eight. Capital facilities to nine. Utilities to ten. Historic resources, eleven, and economic development, twelve. I think it provides, uh, the best flow from my perspective. And if we have to change things for if moving one chapter is going to change every other chapter's references, then might as well move them the way we want them.
I would certainly defer to Commissioner Pestinger's order.
I just went to a whole summit today about housing and economic development and intersect between the two. And so that just thought I'd throw that out there that we don't customarily think about those two things going hand in hand, but it was united way posting it and the whole conversation was about the integration of those two things. You can't one of the other.
Obey the outlier, I think the current one is fine. And I mean, I've been doing this for a while, so I know everything in the order that it's in. And I also think that definitely if we I definitely don't think we should try it before our hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Because people are going to come to us with their whole three, four, five minutes filled with, well, you guys, this says this, but that's not even that chapter. Instead of bringing us meaningful comments. And it, I mean, it could happen either way. It could, if we change it, they could do that at the board.
All right, any additional discussion on this?
Uh, I just fully agree with the other comments that were made to, uh, not make this time urgent, but rather when it's, when it fits the schedule for people to do it.
Okay, um. Do you need a actual vote from us? Do you want a straw poll from us?
I think considering you all wanted action items in the minutes, it might be nice to have a vote so that we can include that in the minutes when you review them next time.
Okay.
Well, I would move that we take option three with implementation right before passing this off to, um, the B O C C.
With notice, with notation that it's going to happen before, like within the planning commission. Or within the planning, that.
Fair enough.
Okay.
All right, um, it's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, any opposed?
No.
We've got one A. All right.
Extentions.
I abstain. I abstain. I, I don't have a dog in this fight. I technically don't call extensions, but, um, yeah. Okay, and I am an I. Okay, so that motion passes. So that will be an action item. So that will be an action item.
Be in the minutes.
All right.
And if it's not, I will act. I forget.
And I'm sorry Maya, if we've disrupted some master plan of yours. Whole organization. What's that?
One other quick comment.
Yeah, go for it.
I just wanted to state, I, I went back and read through all of the meeting minutes. I don't know what I was thinking about the note I was looking for. I could not find it. But uh, I want to commend whoever made the last meeting minutes. Those are some of the best meeting minutes I've seen in a long time. Thank you very much.
We will let our team know.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pessinger.
Awesome. So moving on. We'd like to get through chapter ten today. However, you all. You all are in charge, um, but we can kick it off with chapter three.
Uh, Commissioner Halverson.
I'd like to kick it off with comments on chapter three. So we can get this thing rolling. Page three dash four. Um, I, I'm just at a loss what CSAs mean. Normally you have abbreviations before. They tell what they are and I just couldn't find it. I may be just.
Right there. The third line.
Talking about u- under farming diversity and markets?
On page three, four.
Yeah.
And that third sentence, third line from the beginning of the text, it says community supported agriculture. In parentheses, CSA farms.
Parentheses, huh? Okay, I didn't see that. I don't see it in mind at all, so.
You've got a different graphic.
You've got a different version.
I have a adopted December twenty twenty.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh yeah.
Oh, instead of the proposed.
So I, I'm just gonna make these points. And honestly, you can just make note of them. I want to make this as quick as I can. Uh, two lines after that, it says emus and emus. I, I don't know if we're supposed to have a different type of animal listed there, so the emus twice.
So funny. My copy says alpacas.
On page three dash five. Um. I'm just, I looked at appendix A, there's, the soil types that you referenced, a list of soil types used included in appendix A. Is that listed in appendix A? Uh, is that the updated definition of our soil types that we talked about? Okay.
Which has been appealed.
Um, page three dash twelve. I just think that having the uh, lichen on the tree limb doesn't provide a very good picture of a forest. And I'm just making a recommendation that we actually get a picture of a forest there. Um. Page. Three dash sixteen. Supposed to be a picture of mineral production. I wish we had some picture of a mineral production instead of the capital. Just, just a, it's a note, a point. I just think that that would be appropriate. Um, page. Three dash twenty-two. Uh, after, in the con- conversation, tools for resource lands. We go, reference table three dash five is not listed there for open space programs, although. It's listed a little bit further. It might be better to put table three dash five open space programs. There, uh, in that second paragraph, five lines down. And then you go see table three dash six. Uh, which is there, but that's two pages over. It just seems to be out of place. Um, and then you may. At the top of page three dash twenty-three, I'm going too fast. Please let me know. I'm just trying to. Uh, I would take a little putting table three dash five at the end of that last sentence in the top. Of page three dash twenty-three.
Uh, the one that starts de-designation?
No, the one that says urban or suburban land use farms and forests are now supported by the open space tax program, table three dash five. Which is what it is, just referring back to table three dash five, since we're using open space tax. It's not listed there. Yeah, um. Page three dash twenty-five. That's where we refer to the bottom of page three dash twenty-two. It seems inappropriate to have the table all the way on three dash twenty-five. It just seems like it's just out of order. And I think if you move the table closer to where you provide the reference for table three dash six. It would flow better. Um. And those are all my comments for chapter three and I'll wait for.
Anyone else beat that speed?
The future, I would ask the Commissioner Havers to ask us to buckle our seat belts before.
I got everything, though. Printing out.
All right, I have one comment on three dash twenty-five. Um. The objective A, it says including those outside of agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. I would, should probably say something like not designated as agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. Not identified as something like that. Then I had a comment on N R one A eight. I thought there should be an inclusion maybe that says, um, or to ensure new farmers keep land in production.
Just, just to clarify, so with encouraging farmers to stay in agriculture. Also saying innovative strategies to welcome potentially new farmers in agriculture.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should focus on, have some focus on the land as well. It's important to keep the farmers there, but it's the land at the end of the day. So farmers want to stop farming, how do we keep that land in production? That's going to retire eventually.
Yeah, is that the appropriate place to have something about encouraging, uh, like, I guess, uh, local farmer ownership? Um, I guess when I'm talking about land, like land in production, I do, I do have concern about some things staying in production, but being part of like. Like, like, like that, those profits leaving the state or country entirely. Um, rather than that stuff staying within local production and local ownership. And if we're encouraging um, strategies for conservation of farmland to encourage farmers to stay in agriculture. Um, are we also encouraging farmers to like, like the, the farm, the, the agriculture operations to stay? Um, local in ownership?
Is the state local?
Yep.
I just want, I just want to like, is local?
Well, yeah.
What is, is, what is local? Cause we do have farmers that farm in Lewis County and Thurston County. Um, the state owns quite a bit of land that they have conservation grazing on. So I just want to, like, if we use those terms, just making sure that.
I think it's probably like not in, like, if it's avoidable, not in like multinational corporation. So where does that lie?
Domestic is the word you want to.
Well, I want to be a little bit more clear than that. Like I am actually talking about people. Uh, owning and operating the lands that they're like living among. Like, I think that's, that's an important aspect of this, this like connection to like the actual, like. The connection that uh, Commissioner Nelson has to the region as a farmer is significant. And that's a valuable resource. And I think cultivating that kind of relationship is important. Interested in legislation or in coding that like. That emphasizes that kind of relationship, you know? I think that's less extractive than saying like, oh yeah, someone who uh, is uh, like a company out of Spokane that happens to have farmer, farmer, farm ownership out here. That's local.
I, I would. I mean, I would say I worked on a farm that was owned by a family. None of them lived in state. One of them actually lived out of the country. And for a long time, I like, it's, it's actually been bought. By, by the person who's been, who was farming it, but for a long time, that property. Was a, was a farm run by a local farmer. I mean, it was a guy that came from Yelm and rented it. And he lived there. So, I mean. What do you mean? I just don't want to. dissuade people from buying land in Thurston County and owning it. To keep it as agriculture. Whereas, you know, somebody, somebody else might be like, well, I can buy this and put houses on it. So, I don't, I think there is some benefit to not calling out people that don't live in the area.
Yeah, if it's still in production, it's not houses. And it's, it's still being worked by people who live in the county for the most part. Commissioner Bartlett.
Um, I actually think that that's a good argument for making it a separate uh. Point, um, because that gets you to different, uh, and especially since we're talking about uh. Developing strategies uh, to encourage. I mean, that's not a mandate. Um, we're talking about ways of like encouraging people to uh, stay with local ownership. And like as one, if that, if, if keeping farmland in local ownership and local production with one priority. And making sure that it stays agriculture is a separate priority. Those are two things that can be balanced against each other without that being um. A stacked obligation.
I think in Mr. Nelson's example, it would be like there was a county program to help that local farmer purchase the land.
Exactly.
So.
I, I think the, the key there is to make it so farming is profitable enough that people want to keep farming. And if we're going to do anything that um. Might discourage outside ownership, that would actually make farming tougher. Um, if all of a sudden the pool of potential buyers is. Wind goes down because you have to be local before you can buy farmland or something along those lines. I would, I would have a really hard time. Uh, making so that way the transfer was limited to a certain pool of people and not everybody in general.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is that if we do want to say something, we do want to. It should be like an encouragement and not a restriction.
That's, that's what I was also aiming for.
Okay.
Was encouragement, not discour.
Carrot, not stick. Yep, uh, not. Um. Do we think that would operate as its own objective or policy?
I think it would fit under objective A since that talks about keeping farming.
Okay, and that would, so in that case, it would probably be a new, it would be a new policy. Yeah. Objective A.
I, I'd have a hard time going, having policy language on that, having goal language on that, I think is reasonable. But making that policy, I think is a little stronger than I would feel comfortable with.
Is there a squishy policy language that can be more like explore opportunities or?
Uh, maybe, yeah, maybe something like that, but explore incentives? Yeah, I, you know, as soon as you go to policy, it starts feeling like it can turn into stick a lot easier than carrot.
Sorry, if I could sort of throw out like things that we do already do, like Kevin Jensen's position is connecting. Would be farmers with resources. And so it could just be a like, you know. Support, support new farmers or local farmers, um, and their purchase or growth of. Farming, I mean, and there are, I mean, it's a really complex um, funding. Funding landscape that they have to navigate. And as a county, we are already helping them do that. Um, and so more of that is not a bad thing.
Okay.
Why are you laughing? Oh no.
No, this is great. Uh, so I, I, I have two statements here. One, one is that I think actually it's easier to have this as a policy than as a whole goal. Just the way this is structured, um, making it a separate goal then kind of implies that there have to be sub-policies. And I think it works better as a, as just a policy within this larger goal is my, my argument for that. But what I would specifically say is it would be great to have something that is basically like encourage and simplify the process for local ownership of. Uh, of agricultural land, um, as a policy, that's just, that's affirmative. Um, and it's specifically talking about ways of, of doing the sort of work that we are doing, um, and giving a little bit more. Oops.
And I, I, since it is something we are, we are already doing, you, you could use language like continue. It's not a. It wouldn't be a new thing. If anything, it um, would encourage continued support. For having an agriculture program manager and working with partners like the Thurston Conservation District and the State Conservation Commission.
Do we want to straw poll or vote on that one?
Straw poll at first. I want to see where, where we're at with this.
Continue to remove barriers or.
I'm okay with that kind of language.
I, I like that language. That's, that's fine. Any heartburn with that one? God, are we doing something stupid here?
You can talk to Kevin Johnson if you could.
I think we were just temperature check, checking, yeah?
Yeah.
Is temperature checking enough for you all, Anna Maya?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
I have some comments.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Pessinger.
So I think this chapter is really interesting, um. A lot of different topics, all under the same thing. Uh, I've noticed throughout the whole document, all the chapters, that there's a fair number of paragraphs that just. I don't know what happened, but they just don't make any sense. I'll start out with one example here on page three dash four. Um, it's the first paragraph under farming diversity and markets. The last sentence of that paragraph says, the county's proximity to markets. Its egg and poultry producers and attracts turf growers. I, I don't even know what was intended there, but that's not a real sentence.
Uh.
So I don't know if we have a means for checking for those types of things, but there's, there's a probably ten or more that I found throughout the whole document.
I'm not seeing that.
It's the end of the first, first paragraph.
End. Okay, the county's.
Right after emo and the emus.
Attracts her prayers. Are you right? That is a fragment. After the emo emo.
That got, that one got way too Hemingway.
Yeah. Hemingway took half of the sentence off on that one. All right.
Uh, some more comments. So the next thing, it was just mentioned now about the conservation district. And it seems like there's a number of uh, government, county and otherwise. Uh, local things that's Nino Ag Hub, et cetera, that have been created and done, but aren't really listed in here. And it seems like we ought to reference the fact that the county is committed to doing a lot of these things. And here's the type of things they try to do to support uh, agriculture. I don't know whether that's possible to reference those, but I would recommend it if we can.
They, um, we do a biannual report. Um, through the voluntary stewardship program that highlights all of the things that the region's doing for ag viability. I will say that even, even though it's a report we do every two years, it is very different every two years. So there could be some examples, but they're going to be outdated very quickly.
Yeah, I'm good with that, just to. Get some support info in there.
We've got one question we're gonna let in. Commissioner Pessinger, go ahead.
Real quick, it could, could the most recent version of that report be included as an appendix?
I mean, it could be reference, so the voluntary stewardship.
We're just, just to reference it, that we, we're not, we're not. We're not putting a very dated or quickly dated item in there, but we're providing the examples and we're not doing, adding large amounts of content where, you know, just incorporating.
See, uh, it's the related plans, studies and regulations. I have not read it, but if it's not there, that is a place that it could go. I, I like, I like that idea because we're working on this year.
I want the content in there ideally, from my personal opinion, to be not overburdened with examples, right? It should be sort of guided, but I want them to be able to find them easily if they want them.
And it is, it, it's a, it's a really cool report. I wrote it.
Really. And a very humble author.
All right, carry on, Commissioner Pessinger.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, my next comment has to do with the uh. Uh, information about farming and the history of farming in the county and how that might change for us going forward. Um, I've talked to some farmers and over the last few weeks and. They tell me this sort of short history of Thurston County farming is that we've, we've had different types of crops, um. And we had a history where we had a lot of berries. We might have been one of the strongest counties in the state for. Blueberries and strawberries at one point. Um, we've had a long history of growing some grains, wheat, uh, maybe barley, maybe some hops. Um, and we were never the top hops producer, but we have produced quite a bit of grains at times. Um, these things have sometimes come and gone. We used to do a lot of, uh, cranberries. A lot of those operations got moved out to be. Near the bogs and the, uh, the factories or whatnot for Ocean Spray out in Grace Harbor County, um. So there's been these evolutions to our farming and, you know, they will continue to evolve, but I've heard that some of these things are actually coming back. Blueberries and, uh, wheat and barley might be the better examples, um, and. And they just said, one of the dangers that we've often run into is people start farming something. They find something that's suitable to this climate and these soil conditions, um, and that the public likes to purchase. Uh, and then they all grow the same thing and that historically we've had quite a few crop failures because. Everyone was growing the exact same strawberries. Everyone was growing the exact same blueberries. Everyone was growing the exact same form of wheat. And then those things become very, you know, we know the big hops failure that happened in Pierce County and the whole Western Washington. Um, these things get, uh, with diseases that can't be handled and when we only have one or two crops that we're doing, uh, we. We run into trouble. So that's a common thing in human history and I wonder whether we can make any reference to. Uh, encouraging people to not grow monocultures and not all grow the exact same crop. Um, for fear of future crop failures and future crop, uh, you know, diseases and whatnot.
That's the conservation district and the extension agents.
Yeah, we don't have large pop. Pop growers really anymore. I'm looking at Commissioner Nelson, um, I mean, in large being, I get most a few hundred acres. Like Glenn Shorno's place is one of the biggest ones I know for crops.
Yeah, even right now, we're granting this as we speak with egg prices going through the roof and the avian bird flu. And, uh, I heard we're actually in somewhat better shape here in Thurston County. Um, because we don't have just large industrial, uh, poultry farms here. We have more smaller ones and more diversity. And we've had less issues with, uh, getting wiped out by that here in Thurston County. Now, I'm separating out Wilcox Farms. Which is predominantly in Pierce County and a huge, huge producer. Um, but most of the other farms here, Stavers and others are of a scale and whatnot that. We've been largely protected from that. So I, I'm not saying we have to tell people what to do. I'm just saying, can we have even a paragraph in there that talks about that issue?
I'm interested to hear what, uh, Commissioner Nelson said.
I mean, I don't know what kind of paragraph we could put in that would not at the very least sound like we're telling people what to do.
I agree. I think that is a job for other organizations and agencies to make suggestions on that level. I feel it goes past our remit.
Commissioner Bartlett.
I, I am interested in, uh, again, the idea of like encouraging, uh, like. Diversity of small owners and small a- and, uh, and diverse, uh, agricultural diversity within that. I, I again, I don't know that this, what, what is our scope within that? Um, whether that's, that's actually an actionable policy for us. If it is actionable. I think it, it works better as a, as a, as a carrot of, as encouraging small ownership, encouraging, uh, diversity. Um, that's actually one of the reasons why I like the idea of a lot of, of, of encouraging local folks. Does have a little bit of scale. I do think that there's a, that we're dealing with economic pressures that like. People are naturally going to be pushed under if there isn't something that's supporting them and making those decisions. That's why everyone ends up in a monoculture is everyone's trying to survive. If we can give people alternative tools that allow them to survive, that helps.
Uh, 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 our average farm.
I guess the big picture. Go ahead.
Oh, no, just gonna say like our average farm size, um, uh, is less than twenty acres. Um, our, our predominant, um, type of farm is small. Um, we have a few big ones, but they're mostly, uh, like cattle ranches, prairies, um. And like dairy and eggs, there, there's hardly any left. They keep closing, um, which I think raises. Another set of concerns, like, so we don't have local dairy anymore. We can really only rely on dairy from other areas, um.
Yeah, what you're saying is exactly what I'm getting at too, uh, you know, uh, what we really care about since we're planners is the future, right? And we think we have a future where our population over the next, you know. Twenty plus years is going to increase by a hundred thousand. We're going from three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. We think we've got climate change affecting us and. We may come upon a situation where we can't just ship food to us from all over the world. We may have to produce more of our own feed, uh, food and feed ourselves and. You know, even though you would think Western Washington is in a pretty good position to feed its own people, I. I think with the amount of farmland we even have currently in use, we would be very hard pressed to feed four hundred thousand people. Um, off of food grown in Thurston County in the near future. So. Um, our ability to adapt and evolve and grow to handle that is something that's important and the profitability. Equations might change, but if you look at page three dash four, the section right above the Emus or, or right below the Emus. The next paragraph down, it says that seventy-two percent of the county farms reported less than ten thousand in profit from year. Per year from farm sales and only eight percent reported more than one hundred thousand in profit. So. Like, it's not a good business to be in for most people. And the story I've heard, especially row crops is. One of the highest revenue generating per acre crops, but it's one of the lowest in profitability. It's a huge, heavy burden, a lot of work. And, uh, not much profitability and the folks that really do row farming here in Thurston County. They do it because they care, like they literally have a, in, a belief of I want to feed the people here in my community. And, uh, that's a super valuable resource to us, um, that we maybe don't fully appreciate and support. And so I just want to encourage us thinking about twenty, thirty, forty years from now. Um, how, what can we do to encourage agriculture to be in the best shape possible? Otherwise, we might all be eating gooey ducks.
So I, I would say, I think I, I agree with a lot of this and support it. I do fear that I am on the, uh. Danger part of the Dunning Kruger curve when it comes to agricultural economics. And so I think to Commissioner Kaiser's point personally, I feel like. It feels like the right thing to message, I, but I think we probably wanna be careful about how far we go with that. Without really, uh, honestly talking to people who, whose job it is to think about these types of issues. Um, but I think I would say that we could probably support some language around like diverse and resilient. Agriculture in Thurston County and talk about some of those threats. Um, potential threats without wading too deeply into the agricultural economics.
Cool.
I would just say, it sounds like we already do a fairly decent job at this. Um, farms are smaller, we tend to have more cultivars, um, so I think a goal could. Maybe say something like protect or, uh, continue, you know, it doesn't have to be. It, it raising it that way avoids it becoming overly prescriptive, which is a concern for me.
So, so where we do have room to support is removing barriers. For them to diversify their income streams.
That makes sense.
Um, like that is unlarge, like removing regulatory barriers, trying to support new industries, um.
To, to that point, I remember my very first meeting, I, a little over a year ago, we had some speakers in talking about agritourism. How important that was and is a good way to help protect that and. That language also works to that, which helps make, maybe not. Really profitable only on the crops, but you introduce some, like, help. So I actually, I really like that, that language idea of yours.
Did you want to jump into?
Sure.
What, you go first and then?
Personally, my opinion is that the, the way to support farmers is to reduce the regulations on them. And if, if that's something we wanna seriously consider, there are examples around the country of food freedom regulated, like. Basically counties and cities that have, uh, said that. Within the borders of our jurisdictions, anybody can buy and sell food to anybody else and the federal government has to stay out of it. And I would totally support that.
Me too.
I don't know how that gets written into the comp plan.
No, I don't know either, but if we wanna talk about support farmers.
Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Hudson.
Alright, uh, uh, I, yeah, I agree with that. I think that we're, what we're, it sounds like we're coming up on something that is fitting within. More of the, the goals of the introduction than it is within, with a specific policy, um. I. Uh, think that we should be framing it around the, uh, around a specific. Like, I agree with the idea of, of making it around, uh, removing regulatory barriers with around, uh, in, uh, making it easier for, uh. People to self-support. Um, I think that should be built around a goal of increasing, um. Resilience and self-sufficiency. I think those are the, like, two of the key words for that, um. Uh, like for, uh, Thurston County to feed itself in a. Changing climate and a changing world. Maybe those two and then decreasing, um, supply chain. That's, that's a thing, but like, those, those are, those are kind of the three, the three points in there to me is increased localization, increased, uh, self-sufficiency. Uh, increased resilience. And that also allows it to be a bit of a scale. Because, yeah, realistically Thurston County can't be an island that feeds itself, uh, but Thurston County can be part of a region that feeds itself.
So where do we think that fits? So going from, you know, agricultural resources, the community vision, all the way down. Through the language, through goals, objectives, policies, where do we think that lives?
Well, wouldn't it be a policy under page three dash twenty-seven? Under objective C, provide regulations that are supportive for long-term agricultural use.
You took the words right out of my mouth. That's the exact question I was going to ask.
Straw poll on that one. Okay.
I have, uh, three more comments, if this is a good time.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, so one thing I see in the whole document, especially in this chapter. There's a lot of statements that are kind of nice, but don't really. Reference the source or have factual data behind it. It. Things like a statement on three dash, page three dash four. Farmers in Thurston County share a sense of stewardship and love of the land regardless of farm size or product produced. Uh, or on page three dash nine, under aquaculture, the aquaculture industry in Thurston County uses. Marine and freshwater resources responsibly, promoting wise stewardship of tidelands and related areas, um. There's a lot of these statements all throughout this chapter and throughout the whole document that are kind of like. If you have a source, that would make sense. Like, uh, I would just think, for example, Thurston County residents, uh, love and support, uh, local farm products as evidenced by. The local farmer's market is the number one tourist attraction and has been for like thirty years or more. Um, but, you know, having nothing to back up, just making up statements to say, we love it, we support this, we want more of this. We, we, we endlessly wanna do this. We think it's wonderful for our community. Without any reference of how much, why, there was a survey, this many people say they support it, um, it just seems odd to me, so. I, I just would encourage us to relook at some things where they may need some resources, uh, uh, the actual source information where that. Concept came from. If we just made it up, maybe it's okay, maybe it's not, but we should check on just made up sentences.
I'm mostly. So I was, I was gonna say a lot of it is carryover from what was in the. Prior comp plan and revisiting it is.
Makes sense. Uh, my next comments are about, uh, aquaculture resources in section four or starting on page three dash nine. Um. I've, I've heard a lot of feedback about this particular industry and. It has a wide range of, uh, differentiation between, um, the products and how they've evolved and. Um, we have, we probably, many people witnessed a big disaster with the net pen operations for salmon that was run by Cook Aquaculture. Um, that got run out of the state to some degree. Um, we've got other things related to, uh. Stuff being grown in the shorelines, um. There are statements in here about the shellfish industry and all of this stuff is wonderful. Um, a lot of the data is either not in here about the history and about the volume. Um, some of it's very outdated, like two thousand eighteen. Um, I know looking up information online, it's hard to get recent data. Um, but I certainly have found much more recent data than two thousand fifteen or two thousand eighteen, um. And this stuff has evolved quite a bit, um. The, the number one thing I think is worth mentioning is that, you know, gooey ducks used to be maybe. Five percent, uh, ten percent of the production, a fairly small amount, maybe even lower depending on thirty, forty years ago. There wasn't a huge market for it and that market expanded and it's become highly profitable and China is the number one. Export market for gooey duck and they pay sixty dollars a pound or more, I've heard. Um, it also can be grown in very dense fashion, so. Gooey ducks grow naturally in the South Puget Sound at about two gooey ducks per square meter. Up in the North Puget Sound, it's as little as point two gooey ducks per square meter. I've heard that they're grown here in industrial production at around twenty-six gooey ducks per square meter. And obviously that's a dramatically different impact to the land and the waterfront and, and everything. Um, so I just think there's old data, there's been a lot of changes. Gooey ducks used to be a small proportion. It's become a huge proportion. There's been a lot of growth in the, in the planting of gooey ducks. I'm looking at page three dash ten and there's a map there, um, and it shows next to no. Uh, shellfish operations anywhere on the Niskali Reach or on like. What is that? Johnson Point, Zittles Marina, all that area. And I'm pretty sure there is quite a bit over there, um. So my first problem is that map that's on page three dash ten doesn't have clear enough. Like titles, like it doesn't say, these are leased pieces of property. Or these are in production, whatever the actual status is of this data for these parcels. Um, like, we don't know, it doesn't say it, whether it's just a permit. Well, actually, what does that say? Aqua, I can barely read it. Aquaculture permits or aquaculture what? Parcels.
Parcels.
So it says parcels. Um, it doesn't say whether they're just permitted and maybe they, they are growing there or they're not growing there or whether they're in use and in production and. I just think there's a lot of complicated stuff related to the evolution of the aquaculture industry. Uh, especially shellfish that may well be changing as we speak with new tariffs with China. I don't know what that does to the market for the state of Washington, um, but we're the largest producer and exporter of shellfish around the world. Thanks largely to a humongous company right here in Shelton, uh, and so. There's not enough information in here about the latest, uh. Statistics and the latest volumes and what the threats are to the industry and what the concerns are. It's not one hundred percent perfectly sustainable, even though it says that in the opening paragraph, um, I think that. Oysters are very sustainable and have a pretty good reputation for being filters and cleaners of water. Uh, gooey ducks is a different story. Gooey ducks don't filter the water in the way that, you know, burrowing shrimp or oysters do, so. Uh, we, we're kind of. Lumping all of these things together and maybe we need a little more differentiation and a little more data about the aquaculture industry here since it is so big. And then my last comment has to do with forests, resources and forestry in general. Designated forest lands of long-term commercial significance, all of that. Uh, my biggest thought there is that. There's big differences in. There's big differences in forests and there's forests that are just literally farms. Where we're growing trees and we can chop them down every whatever. There's ones that are designed to be chopped down thirty years, most are more like sixty to a hundred years. But it's an it's under the USDA and it's an agricultural product, like it's literally farms of trees. And usually monocultures, but not always. Nevertheless, we're talking about forestry. And then there's forests that are forests that are there that provide natural beauty, that provide us a humongous environmental benefits. And that provide us uh incredible biodiversity and wildlife benefits. And I think we need to do more to differentiate between forest land that is simply farming. And forest land that is uh more environmentally impactful to us.
All right, thank you Commissioner Pesinger. Do we have more? On chapter three.
The last point about ag or forestry, it applies to ag too. Um, there are quite a few policies that do exist in the climate chapter. Which is currently chapter twelve, um, and probably the chapter nine, the environment chapter, so. We just want to take a look at those and that applies, I just pointed out some to Commissioner Bartlett that like ag resiliency, there's like four or five policies actually in chapter twelve about it. Um, I think we'll still find, there's still a gap there that we'll be able to fill in chapter three, but we'll have to look at other chapters to see if it's addressed.
Perfect, thank you for that and I'm even more glad that I requested moving that one up.
Mr. Bomberger and then Bishop Bartlett. Just one thing, uh, a little further in, you'll see a picture of an aerial shot of a road, misty, uh, misty trees around it. I don't know what the source of that photo is, but looking at it closely, it has some hallmarks of something produced with generative AI. Um, I don't love that if that is where it was sourced, so.
Do you have a page number?
Yeah, uh, if you look closely at the, um, it looks like a drone shot, yeah, but um, I reversed image searched it and it doesn't exist. Um, and that typically only happens when they're AI generated and if you look at the branch distribution, it's a little too uniform. I don't know, I could be wrong.
I think so, most of the photos, I'm not sure about this one, um, we have access to experience Olympia's photo bank. Um, so.
I don't know, I just.
Were in there, we're we're definitely not even from this region, but we can check that one because our our goal is.
Pickled my my senses and it's better to remove it if it is than I'm somewhat upset about it.
All right. I don't know if we're gonna make your goal mine.
Uh, yeah, if we don't make the call, I think we can discuss this at the end, but we'll likely need to schedule some special meetings in March, but we can reserve that for. The end of tonight's meeting.
All right.
I never seen my hands, but it'd be interesting time.
Okay. All right, we ready to move on to chapter four?
All right. Got at least one vote for yes in the room.
So chapter four, beefy, big, as you all are well aware, um, we updated the TCTV reference that you ran up. Couple or sections ago, Commissioner Kaiser, thank you. Um, it's not in the draft that is online, but it is in the working draft that staff have. We've made sure to implement that as well as making sure that we have the goal specifically calling out the five percent rural growth. Um, this goal is the one that uh Loretta mentioned in her public comment requesting it be moved to the first goal. The one on the slide right here, um, it's currently goal five in our internal staff document, we've updated it to make sure that it has the rural growth targets.
Mr. Oliverson, you gonna take us on a red?
I I have no substantive comments for chapter four housing, but I do have a lot of editing comments and I will provide these to you. In hard copy.
I have a comment on four dash twenty eight on one C two. Um, I think it's got a whole list from the RCW, but I think those we might want to call those. So that they're county appropriate. So I doubt we're gonna do like heightened bulk bonuses in the county. Uh, we could just reference the list, but I would call it for appropriateness in the county. Or make some note that some of these might not be appropriate for the county. Are listed in the RCW. All right, going once.
Sorry, what are we just deciding or saying?
Um, we're on chapter four and we don't have much discussion here in the room.
Got you. Uh, all right, then I do have one quick comment.
Go for it.
So on the opening page four dash one, uh, the second paragraph starts out with Thurston County is growing fast. This creates a high demand for housing. The supply of housing has not kept pace with demand, resulting in rising housing costs. Um, I I agree with that statement, but I don't think it's the whole story. I think there are other issues that result in rising housing cost. Um, the number one issue that I've mentioned to the commission is, I think, outside capital investors, uh, the commodification of housing. Um, and I wonder whether we could add that to the sentence that's saying resulting in rising house costs, the supply of housing. Uh, has not kept pace with demand and along with outside uh commodi- capital and commodification. Of housing, this has resulted in rising housing costs.
I'd agree with that.
I will add, because I think this might be helpful for all of you as you're working through things, so the. Draft document you all are looking at, every chapter has been plain talked. So the previous drafts that were written, as they were written, that you reviewed the first couple of times, you looked at them all. Obviously sound very different, um, so if it's helpful to refer back to those versions and if there's language in those in those versions that you prefer. That you think better capture the nuance of these topics, you can absolutely let us know and we can integrate those, I think, as we're moving along and as we're learning. And working through plain talking documents that it's easy to lose nuance and that as we're working through this, there we're we're not going to be able to achieve an eighth grade reading level. Um, especially when talking about intricacies of housing and capitalism and those sorts, so. Just if you putting that out there, there's language that exists, it's just not in the one we're discussing and if you think it should be in the one. That is for the public hearing, we can integrate that back in.
Yeah, because that'll, it may have existed, but that will allow it to continue to.
Yes.
Where it might otherwise go extinct. Um, yeah, I agree with. Uh, about uh wanting to address this stuff a little bit more systemically. Um, I think that gives us a better framework in terms of how people implement policy going forward with this leaning on it.
I I think the danger in that is that if we start looking at external reasons why. Uh, housing costs have gone up because of outside capital being pushed in, that we will find excuses on why we're not doing things. Internally to increase supply. And so if we always have a boogeyman, Black Rock rocks coming in buying all the houses, then. We don't really, there's nothing we can do, so we don't really need to do anything to change policies, um, making housing more affordable by. Regulatory regulatory unburdening.
Um, Bishop Bummer.
I didn't think to replace that. I wasn't replacing the supply of housing has not kept pace. I think that is absolutely true and should stay in there. I wanted to add something.
Um, I I just wanted to take a moment and read what is in the current approved plan. It says Thurston County is experiencing tremendous growth. Most of this population growth is from people moving into Thurston County from elsewhere. This growth is due to a strong Puget Sound economy coupled with a high quality of life. The tremendous population growth has increased the competition for housing, which results in higher prices. To address the changing needs of the community, the county is working to foster housing that is affordable to those at all income levels. From those who are homeless to workforce families and to those earning higher wages. That was the original language that likely got hemmed and weighed.
I think that speaks to the complexity of the problem.
Yeah, it does.
It doesn't suggest the solution, kind of, kind of the the directed way that we're talking about with housing supply and financialization. Uh, which is an issue.
If if I could just make a suggestion, um, I I think we all acknowledge that this is complex and it likely is impossible. To to save, cite all of the factors that are are contributing. I think we can just say that. Like, housing is complex, demand is up, prices are up, um, and a variety of economic factors are or. Like, we can just say it's it's complex and there's a lot of stuff impacting it. I don't think we need to try and laundry list or fully diagnose the issue in there. I think our policies and our goals address those.
That's that's my stance on that. I would support unhemming the language.
I think that that language is really, both versions have some value. Um, that I don't think, when you say, that was a different issue than what I'm talking about. When we say people are moving from out of county and it's mostly, by the way, mentioned elsewhere as Seattle, Tacoma and Bellevue. Um, that those people are moving here and buying housing and they've got more money to spend. They sold their house for one point two million and that to them. A five, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar houses a bargain. Um, that's part of the problem, but that's not the problem I'm remotely referring to when I say outside capital. I'm talking about non-resident owners. I'm talking about uh people that live in other countries that are buying properties all cash purely for. Financial investment purposes. I'm talking about Black Rock buying up mobile home parks. When Commissioner Bomberger says that rents in mobile home parks in some places in Olympia have increased from six hundred a month just for the land only. To over two thousand dollars a month just in the last five years, um, because of companies like Black Rock and purchasing. Uh, large volumes of mobile home parks and having captive, you know, customers that can't even have any chance of moving out. Um, it is, that is what I'm referencing and I think it's a huge deal. I think it's a known issue, but it's often overlooked. And most government agencies I've heard in Thurston County never mention outside capital and and what is it called? Absentee landlords. They always reference supply and demand, supply and demand, supply and demand. And I'm simply asking that we not just keep saying supply and demand or that it's complicated, but that we say. Outside capital is having a significant investment in real estate and commodification of real estate. Is having a heavy impact because that leads to policies like you might have to pay a higher property tax if you're.
Time, um, I I think we appreciate it and my point was that the the word competition. Captures that. Um, it's competition for housing from different sources. Um, I think you could flesh out the older language a little bit, um, to talk about the types of competition for housing. There's competition internally, there's competition from people outside of the region moving in, there's competition from um investors. There, I think if we use that competition instead of supply and demand, I think it allows us to speak a little bit more broadly. To the pressure on housing. Mr. Bartlett.
Um, I agree with you about the competition, uh, about like highlighting competition, maybe using this umbrella term. If we're going to use umbrella terms in that context, we do need to have policies that reflect that and we, and to Commissioner Bomberger's point. Um, not only, uh, the, we neither, at this point, we neither have policies that address the financial or the uh. The the financialization, the outside funding of uh housing here, nor do we have policies or nor we have a reference to it. And I agree that like the situation is complex, but the situation is complex is at least as much of a hand wave. Uh, or or leading to an action as uh saying that the issue is just supply. I think highlighting supply, highlighting competition, if we just did those two, that'd be one thing, but we still have to, we have to have policies that reflect that. And I think uh Commissioner Pesinger pointed that we neither have language nor do we have policies that reflect uh outside capital. And like you can have policies that reflect outside capital and have policies that reflect uh supply, being again a balance where you're supporting both of those.
And I think we're also talking about two different things here. We're talking about the very specific language in the introduction. Um, and we have not yet broached the idea of goals, objectives or policies on this issue, but go ahead, Commissioner.
I I think, just to play devil's advocate here, because I think Commissioner Pesinger's concerns are are real, um, but. Again, I don't know where that kind of discussion is appropriate within the comp plan, because those are things that the county really does not have any control over in any way. Not that they need to be ignored. Secondarily, we don't have any data on that. We don't have any data. I mean, I I'm sure that Black Rock is coming in and buying up that kind of stuff. But if we were already talking earlier tonight about how we have to have data before we put something in our comp plan. I've not heard any data on how much outside ownership there is and how that has impacted our housing prices.
Mr. Hanson, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you for making the point. I was trying to figure out how to say that. I I don't know. Um, I don't know exactly how much of this is happening. I I think it is probably, but I don't know how much. And I wonder if we start calling out individual factors, how do we figure out where to stop? Um, I think the competition language gets to it because it addresses, it says, yes, there's competition from various places from. People moving out from out of the area, from investors buying homes, um. But if we're gonna call out one thing in particular, like I think there's gonna end up being a big long list of things that we feel the need to. To call out in the content, I don't know if that's appropriate.
And I think along these lines, I think the path through the woods here on this, to me, it looks like, you know, changing some of this language to speak more to competition. And then at some point, either having a policy, having some sort of policy about understanding the nature of. Property ownership in Thurston County. So which of these are second homes? Which of these are people Airbnb? Which of them are owned by outside capital? Which one are owned by foreign investors? If we could try and understand that, um, that I think is the first step to doing something about it. And um, that could also be something that lives as a that as a policy. I think that's how you get from where we are today. And not only understanding it, but doing something about it, you have to know what you're doing and what the situation is. But that's my my personal opinion, so.
I mean, to to me, that 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 is actionable, like we don't have data now, but saying that. We should better understand, um.
If if we have data in place in five years when this gets revised again, they'll be able to make some more, so the action is to get the data.
Support.
Yeah, and I don't even know what that looks like, but yeah.
Ultimately, it's kind of late to rack on it, but with no data. Do kind of function on, what we do have data is like national trends, but this isn't a national document. So it's hard to speak to that.
No, and when I did ask about the data related to lodging taxes.
I asked about this.
It there, it didn't show a very significant number in rural, rural county.
Yeah.
Um, and so it would be, you know, it would, it would take us a while to figure out. What data exists and what methodology you could use, but that at least is actionable and would inform future policy.
Yeah.
You spoke to a lot of my point already, um, but yeah, this is, this is, I mean, a lot of the implementation plan is, you know, study this, research this. Commission a study for this, that's, that is a lot of what we do. So say, so that is, that is absolutely what I advocate is. We have at least something in here about pursue, like actively pursuing that information. And if we wanted to have something that was like that, pursuing that information with a goal of supporting local ownership of phones, of people of of people. Homes, that would be great. Um, I think that's something that is non controversial, but like, um. Yeah, I would, those are, those are kinds, I, those things should live in policy, those should, that's absolutely implementable.
Okay, so does this start to get us where you wanted us to go, Commissioner Passenger?
Yeah, especially this last few uh comments, I would even go so far as to make a motion to request the study of. Uh, non-resident ownership in Thurston County.
I think we could request its inclusion in the comp plan, is that what you mean?
No. I I would, I would make the recommendation that we include that kind of language in our closing recommendations to the board of county. In our closing recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners when we vote on approve this and send it forward. That would be a form of a recommendation from the, so that right, that's right. Instead of putting it in the comp plan, it'd be a recommendation to, in the next version or subsequent to it. Uh, that we put together a study or, or get a grant for a study to study this issue.
I think those are mutually exclusive.
That would be the, I, I think that would be the appropriate way to handle it.
Okay, I think that's, those are.
That way it'd be formalized.
Okay, so are you suggesting not writing it as a policy?
I don't know how you could write it in there as a policy. There's no, there's no study, there's no grant, there's no information.
You could have it be a policy to like, understand the nature of property ownership or in Thurston County, something like that could be a policy.
Understand is different than, you know, commission or conduct a study.
Yeah, yeah. I think the chair is correct that having it as a policy in there will also make it easier. So when staff does go looking for a grant or looking for. Something, how, how to work on it, they can go back and say this is in alignment with our complaint policy. So there's a middle path here, squishy po- policy and term ass.
Yeah.
A little more detail in the recommendation.
Okay. Does that clarify a bit? Uh, you were in the middle of making a motion, Commissioner Passenger?
No, that, that's what you just said is what I was aiming at.
What was that again?
What you, the chair just said is what I was aiming at.
Okay, I can't move that.
Do we need a motion? I was, I thought you were saying we're all on the same page and ready to do this. If you need a motion, I'd be happy to make one.
Is there? Yep. Temperature check, thumbs?
Okay, do you know?
Just to confirm the temperature check.
Thank you.
Incorporate some slightly squishy policy language in the goal objectives policies of the housing chapter. That. Encourage and get at us at some point between now and wherever the end of the time gap is. Um, study and gather firmer understanding on ownership of properties in Thurston County. Be it residence or external. And then additionally have a more concrete recommendation that goes to the board.
Formal recommendation with our recommendation on approval of. To do a, a study in the future to do that.
I will add that I, I think this is valuable too, cause in the conversations I've been having with public health, um, since we don't, we don't do this. They're the ones that do the housing is that my perspective on the goals and policies in this chapter is that the last thing I want is for us to solidify a policy that could then be used against them. In trying to do work. And so I think this does open a potential avenue that if we have it in the comp plan, it's just another thing that that group could point to and say. This, this big state document that CPED did indicates that we need to look at trends and understand ownership of property in the county. So that they can go after it, so.
I mean, if it's not overly prescriptive, that leaves where that work happens. Flexible.
Policy in the future will have headlight. All right. Anything else for chapter four?
Mr. Albert.
I'll kick off chapter five.
All right, moving along. Seatbelts, everybody.
Your seats. Uh, I'll provide all my edit comments with this thing. I'm just gonna talk about the things that I think everybody needs to hear. Um. Page five dash thirteen. Halfway down the page, the sustainable Thurston report card aims to reduce per capita. Vehicle miles traveled by thirty percent from da, 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 and then keep continues on going. I think this. This per capita use is unrealistic considering the population is increasing by thirty percent during this same timeframe. I just don't see it as being realistic. Now, that's my comment.
Okay, this one's per capita though, right?
Yeah, per capita, yeah.
So how would an increase in population change the per capita calculations?
Well, I think we're talking about the rural area. And more people are gonna be moving into the rural area. And they said thirty, thirty percent increase in, in, uh, population. I just don't, I don't know that. That people are, people's jobs are gonna be connected to their local location if more people are moving in. As we all know, the only location right now that the, uh, that the workforce is concentrating is Grand Mound for the rural area. Cities of Olympia, Tumwater and Lacey. So if they're moving into the rural area, they're gonna be traveling more miles. That's my point.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking that with the five percent.
Yeah.
We're looking at a five percent in the rural areas, broken housing.
Yeah, I was just looking at the increase in population. I guess that would be in the county overall, but I thought it was the, the, uh, rural area.
I think that's precisely one of the, why we were saying we were pushing for the five percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we could make that realistic, realistic target.
Okay, that, that could be into that cross. The other one is on page five dash twenty-five. I just think that's a poor picture of a bike route. It's just a.
It's an accurate picture of what our bike routes look like in this county, generally.
They aren't great. Yeah, uh. On page five dash thirty-one, under air transportation, we got two paragraphs there that are identical, they're just two footed. Everything else is just edits and I'll give that to you.
Really interesting to be looking at the pre Hemingway version and then listening to your comments. I mean, it's in many cases wor- much worse. It's dropped things, it's dropped.
Yeah.
Critical information and it's created sentence fragment.
Significant issue.
Yeah.
Something that we, that has actually, uh, a significant challenge in our working group. It's like how it's, it, it, uh, pushes us from doing the, what are our goals from, for these policies to how do we make this legible? Exactly, um, so it, I, I think it's an important goal. I, I understand why it was done. And I'm not saying that it shouldn't have been, but it does. I just want to acknowledge that it has made that, that a significant challenge. I can't imagine what it's doing to the workflow overall, like once we respond to all of, all of our, our aspirational comments.
I think Ernest might be disappointed.
Quick, I, if I remember correctly, we use the, um, assistive tools. Not on goals and policies, only on.
Narrative.
Only on narrative, so just, just be correct, we said that tool did not touch policies and so. It did not remove specificity from any of the policies.
I actually just.
I just wanted to reiterate that.
I went and double checked all the chapter three stuff.
Yeah.
And it, yeah, it wasn't applied to any of those. I mean, you get the double emu. Double.
Emu, emu, maybe they went limo, emu, and it was like a secret ad for.
He doesn't want an extra.
I have a duck limo, emu at home, just so you know.
That determines against other attitudes.
I just.
Um, I've got a couple on chapter five. Um, I don't do, does the county anywhere have like any kind of. Uh, policy, not necessarily just in the comp plan on e-bikes. And where they're allowed, like what kinds, like where.
I'm pretty sure Public Works does, cause they've been wreaking havoc on some of the trails.
They're, they're regulated under state rules and it has to do with their top speed.
But.
I'll, I'll do some hunting, cause it might be in their parks and trails, but there's both a regional one and a local one, so I can.
But, um, if we don't, I've had, this was all pretty much devoid of anything about e-bikes, which could be a really, really, uh, important. Transportation mode moving forward.
Yeah, they're a good bridge.
There's also some grants that are coming out to help low income people buy them in the next couple of years.
Um, I also had a comment on five thirteen. The menu of choices feels like we might wanna curate that. Under the Washington Department of Commerce climate menu of measures. One that really gets me is the, to boost public transit use subsidized vehicle license fees for low income drivers who can prove they used transit in the past year.
I was wondering what that means.
That feels so.
Contradictory?
Yeah, um. Yeah, also.
Self-defeating?
In a lot of cases, it'd be hard to prove it these days. You don't, you get charged, so you don't need bus passes or whatever.
I'm, I, maybe you can explain to me what that sentence means, cause I. I'm struggling to figure it out.
You give people a break on their car tags if they have a bus pass, essentially.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, in areas that have those, you could be like, oh, here's my Orca card.
Right.
Like my Orca card in good standing, so can I get a discount on this?
It's my Bus Rider Punch Card.
Yeah.
I, I could see it making sense if someone was displaced into rural county where they didn't have access to buses. Um, they needed to a car, then providing them a discount on licensing fees.
He was intercity and there's no fare.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know how you would prove it though, but it seems pretty niche and it's also even with that stated. Our goal is to curb growth in rural county, so it could create a perverse incentive there.
Yeah, that's, that's the, there's no.
Anyway, again, I understand that that's a, that's a list that the Department of Commerce put out and whether or not you chop those up.
Um, is it six of one half dozen of another? Which, which section exactly is that?
This is five thirteen.
Yeah, I would look it up in the original version to see maybe how that got.
Follows right below where I was talking about to the MP.
And then on, um, on five nineteen. B three, the local urban road, that is not urban. Any stretch of the imagination. Maybe it fits some sort of category that would leave it there, but that is about as suburban as it gets. And then on five eighteen, there's an exhibit of private paved and private gravel roads. Um, why are those in improvement, roadway improvement section? Are we gonna improve people's driveways? Private roads? Or are those gonna be not included in actual improvements? Is the county gonna pay for that or is that? The owner, operators of those roads? I think, uh, was this.
I don't know if suggesting that or not.
Right? I don't know what it's telling us about those.
Yeah, to me, it just looks like it's, they're just identifying the different types of roads. And pointing it amount with pictures. I don't think it's making any recommendations that the county paid for at all.
Except that it's in the roadway improvement section.
Yeah.
Yes. Anyway, Mr. Barrett.
Um, actually, I'm gonna hop back to a point that Commissioner Halverson made about the, uh, bike routes. Because I'm, I'm, I'm working with a different version, so I'm like, I, I finally found it. Um, uh, yeah, that is unfortunately very realistic. If we're looking for something more aspirational. Um, it might be better to use some of the new bike routes that are in downtown Olympia as examples of bike routes, uh, that. Might be what we want.
Just familiar.
So that is, oh, this is, this is extremely familiar from, from my life.
All right, anything else on chapter five?
That bullet. Uh, just a question, Chair, how many chapters are we gonna try and get through tonight?
All of them. I'm kidding, uh, we're going through ten. So we've got four more.
On this same topic that we talked about of kind of having the plane, the. The plane talk thing kind of screw up some sentences. I found, uh, five or six examples from chapters one and two. Did I bring them up now or wait till we finish chapter ten?
I think would be really helpful for those is to, those are edits, like just send them to us, um, like Commissioner Halverson's gonna do. Cause that way it's a really easy, we just go through and. Make the changes.
Will do.
It does, it sounds like it's not substantive. It's really just going back to the old version.
Well, um, the bad grammar or chopped sentences or whatever is one thing. There's a couple of charts that are just straight up wrong. Um, about population and, uh. Median income and racial demographics and whatnot, um, or actually population by county and by rural and non-rural. Um, but I, I'll still send them to you. They're just mistakes. Like we say that sixty, sixty percent in one bucket, when we meant to say sixty. Or we say sixty-seven percent, we meant to say sixty percent. And then the totals for the whole number is like way over a hundred percent, so. Uh, I'll send them. I don't think we need to debate them.
That, 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 that would be appreciated. And if there is something that is, does appear to be more substantive, we can bring it back.
Cool.
Mr. Barrett.
Uh, proposal in that regard, which is that when we're talking, when, when we're trying to power through this, uh, we. Uh, in general, when we're finding these really good, uh, like corrections. To have the corrections be something that we address in a direct response. Um, outside of the context of the meeting where they need discussion and we save the, the, the comments in here for stuff that really we want to. Maybe get into.
I think it's a good suggestion. All right, anything else on chapter five before we move on to utility or capital facilities? All right, capital facilities.
Skip? Can we skip?
I just got a couple actually of this chapter. Um, page six dash one. Uh, we talked about one twenty-five update critical issues. We have public facilities, public services. Um, I don't know if we wanna, you know, cause the county is not responsible really for schools, fire protection and education. Uh, it may be better to have a separate category, put it at the bottom and say that those are listed only for reference or conurrence. Um, because coordination, that's actually why we put them in there is for coordination. Versus identifying as something the county's responsible for. Um, the next one would be page six dash five. We, in the chart that you have on table six dash one, show Boston Harbor Boat Ramp. Uh, but what about the other public WDFW owned boat launches in the county? There are a lot of them. Uh, is there some reason we just point out Boston Harbor Boat Ramp versus all the others? I mean, there's like thirty of them. So I don't know if we want to, you know, project serving shared needs. Um. I, I don't know how that needs to be covered, but there's a lot of WDFW boat launches in Thurston County. Mo- almost every one of our lakes, we have a hundred and eight lakes in our county. Not every one of them have them, but a lot of them do, so we may wanna make a little bit more of a statement about public boat ramps. Uh, in that table. That's just my comment. Yeah, the other one was. On page six dash sixteen. My comment here is, wow, what a mess. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, it's, it's on capital projects and funding. I read through it and I stumble and I, what the hell's going on? Just, that, that does not seem to be consistent with the current DOCC intent. On what they wanna do for capital facilities with the courthouse complex. That's my main comment there. Actually, you would know better. It seems to be old information from almost six months ago.
I, I think, whi- which is when we, this got drafted or even longer ago. So yes, I, thank, thank you for bringing this one up because. There is more current information just in the last.
Yeah. Last few months.
Yeah, so we can, we can make sure that we get central services feedback on that.
The rest of it, I'll just leave for editing comments.
And we, you, and as we get closer to adoption of this, probably gonna be a few more of these where it's like in real time, things are happening.
Right. So many lakes and so few public beaches.
Public boat ramps.
I have many a scar from swimming off of a boat ramp.
Um, I've got one comment on six one, in the definition of capital facilities. Um. They're necessa- they, it says that they're necessary to support the county's population. I think they're also necessary to protect the environment. If we're talking about things like stormwater utilities, um, and wastewater. So I would expand that definition beyond just support, um, the population.
What about the public interest? That's a good way to address both.
Yeah, that is. Yeah, that is. So just something that makes it clear that those aren't necessarily just to benefit people, but are also to. For the public interest. Maybe one more. Um, on six dash eleven, under land acquisitions for wells three and four, it says to lock up land. I think we'd probably want to say protector acquired.
Reserve would even be better than lock up, but yeah.
Maybe concise is not our friend there?
Yeah, I mean, it's gets the point across.
Anyways, a bit too direct on that one.
Takes us from friendly. That's it for. Anything else? Maybe we just remove this one from the comp plan for sure.
The CIP is gonna be coming to you and it's gonna look a lot different.
I'm keeping my mouth.
Would you like a?
I don't think they did rotate to you. I think it missed you, so.
All right, anything else on six? Going once, going twice. All right, seven.
I have a quick comment. I missed a question on chapter five. I apologize. Can I go back to that?
You may.
I'll keep it short. Uh, page five dash thirty zero, it's about railroad transportation. Uh, rail transportation. And I just noticed, you know, obviously we're focused on pedestrian transportation, but. Down in the second set of bullet points on page five dash thirty, at the bottom of the page, it talks about freight shipping was declining. Um, and then later it talks about safety related to rail transportation. I I'm just curious, I don't see any mention anywhere here of uh oil trains. Running through Thurston County. Um, we've seen a lot of news examples of oil trains being highly dangerous and combustible. Um, we know they even go right into downtown Seattle, so obviously the state of Washington has made choices to run oil trains. Uh, all through Western Washington, but um they've been shown to have a fairly good number of. Uh, derailments and quite a bit of environmental and even fire uh and human uh. Human injury damages, so uh is it worth mentioning something about oil trains? And whether or not they even run through Thurston County and whether that's changing?
You can even go so far as combustibles, which includes that.
I don't see how that falls under our authority. That's the problem. Do we get to dictate?
Not at all.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's just, I think, out of our scope.
State or federal commission.
We don't have much, we can't do much about uh the fact that that stuff is getting run. But acknowledging that that's a significant safety risk does uh. Yeah, uh, well, and it shifts us to to what we can do since it's gonna happen.
And and I don't know why it keeps getting positioned this way. I'm not looking at outlawing oil trains or making some law for that. I'm just simply stating what Commissioner Bartlett just said, that we simply mentioned that it exists and it is a secure, a security health risk.
I I think this is one of the things that are the old version had some better language on. Um, it talked about addressing the environmental impacts of. Done what, five thirty right now? And which which is the particular bullet you're taking objection to, Fisher, uh, passenger?
Yeah, or just wanting to expand it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, you're you're right, um, what the old one had more. Better language than quote good uses. It said, um. It's, I hate that this jumps around each time, one second. Um, it said, uh, decisions of what are, uh, what uses are appropriate and environmentally sound on railway right of way. That is acquired by public entities, nature trails, bikeways, historical cultural activities, future roadway connections, future rail. Like it, the the rail chapter looks very different in the old version. Um, but it's a little more structured and a little more detailed about addressing. Well, when we make decisions that impact rail, that we consider the environmental impact, which I think is probably the closest you can get to. Like putting some sort of implementation on it. It it's, I think it's on thirty three in the old version. Five thirty three. But it is, it's cleaner language, in my opinion, but that's from a different public hearing and so. But good uses is.
That's great.
Really vague in the new version.
It's a, yeah, the old version, I I applaud some of that. That's that's some good stuff in those bullet points.
Where where there are parallels, I think it'd be worthwhile to look at the old language. And my my thing, I'm just opening old version, new version.
Anna's writing things like not good enough. No, well, I mean, just like it's, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Crony face stickers, just.
Oh, that would be great. All that to say, she's she's capturing.
If I brought gold stars, it would feel condescending. Okay, well, hey, if I bring you stickers next time.
My birthday's tomorrow, so.
I I would want a day off after doing with us too.
No, I love committing planning commission.
Just just a note here, we're running, we're running overtime. How do we want to try and push through chapter ten? How do we feel?
If we don't push through chapter ten, we're going to have special meetings in March.
How about, I think we are already, if we, so chapter seven is utilities and chapter ten is historic. Chapter nine is environment, recreation, open space. That would be fear. Does it seem more feasible to get through utilities and historic resources pretty quickly? And then plan chapter nine next time. I think that we could, I think we could do that and not need a special. That would leave nine, it would leave climate and things like the appendices and implementation plan and. Any outstanding things that.
Natural resources and climate makes sense to attach together anyway.
So there's a lot of cross-reference.
All right, that sounds like a great plan, so we're, okay, so we're doing, we're gonna do seven and ten?
Yes.
Call it a night. All right. All right.
Those substantive changes, just edits and I'll give them to you.
I also have no substantive.
I have a clarifying question.
Go ahead.
Page seven dash three, the chart about private utilities and public utilities. When it lists water Thurston County and sewer Thurston County in those three and five locations. Is that from the public utilities district or something different?
Uh, those are the county operated Boston Harbor, Grand Mount and Tamishin. Water facilities and those are operated by Public Works. I I think that's different. I think that's different than the PUDs.
Yeah, I think so too. Is there, does it make any sense to have any reference to the PUD stuff in here? Cause they do quite a bit.
I think we've opted out of having the PUDs in this chapter in the past simply because they are their own realm. As opposed to us having jurisdiction or authority over what they may or may not do.
Okay, fair enough. Just wanted to ask. Thank you. Uh, sorry, one more question about cable providers, my favorite topic.
Go ahead.
It lists a utility provider Comcast Cable. Um, it is certainly, I think, the only one that has a license that serves the entire county. Um, and even some, uh, well, I won't say that. But there are other cable providers in the county that serve the county. Uh, there's Starlink, there's Lumen, there's uh. Zipley Fiber, um, several other ones. Uh, is there a reason we, is it just because they're smaller? Or because they don't necessarily serve everyone in the whole county? That we don't list them?
Because we're not talking about internet as a utility?
I think we should. It's not listed in there, but I don't know any person moving into the county who. Wouldn't have that as a consideration, or living in the county. I feel like. This is for twenty forty and we're not, for twenty forty five and we're not considering internet a utility. Like there are jobs you can't perform, bills you can't pay without it, like. In in a lot of ways, it is more essential than cable at this point.
Much more, I would say, yeah.
Standard telephone.
Or, yeah, it's true. It 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 replaces oftentimes the other ones. Well, not power, but you know.
So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Could we add, is there a problem with adding that as a utility? Is it like out of scope base?
It should be good statewide data. We wouldn't even really need to do.
It is not in there simply because it was not in the twenty nineteen draft. Um, this, the utilities chapter was not one that I gave the same level of visioning as I may have other chapters. So updating the data that existed as opposed to adding in additional things, but.
Related to that, uh. They do, I would like us to uh support, uh. This goes into both utilities and resiliency, um, but it's uh like having more uh. Community and uh local uh both like ownership and distribution of those of those utilities. Um, so things like, you know, how's it like, like you're on solar, you're on or mesh network uh for uh. Uh, internet, like supporting um community, like. Uh, utilities distribution would be a really good uh disaster resiliency and just general. That I know that there's a lot of national and state support for. That we help who who start on the always bright funding wise. I'm sure Commissioner Hanson has a lot of thought about that, but we can get into that with another time.
All right.
Would just add, um, the FCC has an interactive map. It shows both fixed and mobile broadband providers. Yeah, in an interactive way, which might be a great way to separate out instead of just internet, you could do um. Mobile broadband and mixed broadband. That way we're. We're copying that language and hopefully saving some rework. And they have data up to June of last year, so pretty current.
Anything else in utilities? Before we move on to chapter ten? All right. Chapter ten.
So much.
I like the transition from art of resources to uh. Cultural resources, I think that it's a. What we're dealing with a little bit better.
All right, nothing on ten?
And you want to highlight that there is a big ribbon cutting this weekend uh for the new uh. Historic, oh god, I'm losing words, the rack, at the rack. Um, there's, they're doing a big like kiosk of. What?
A regional athletic complex?
Athletic complex, they are ribbon cutting this um kiosk with all this historic information about. If you want to go hear some music and have cake. I will get you the details. I have to look them up, I don't remember.
Okay, and we'll see you Friday morning at Lincoln there.
Well, I believe that concludes our work session number thirty. On Thurston twenty forty five.
Can we take just a second to go to the SEIS slide? Um, I just want to talk about this a minute. I won't take long, but I do want to note that uh thanks to our community members. We developed a report card for our SEIS that's online. And so that outlines the alternatives that are reviewed in that report and where they stand in terms of impacts. Uh, so that's on the Thurston twenty forty five website. And for the public that's watching, we have our comment period open until March thirtieth. So if there are any questions that come up on this, I welcome the planning commission to bring them to our next work session.
Thank you.
I do have some issues in the cultural resources, I'm just gonna.
All right. Anything else on? Thurston twenty forty five?
Can I make one quick comment? I I like that idea of a report card. The only thing I would caution against uh. Is using stop sign colors uh for for measuring impacts, particularly when your options are essentially. Uh, zero, one, and everything in between is is the same color. Um, we have a lot of situations in here where yellow is anything that is no, i- is not no essentially. And there are differences between the two columns in yellow, so gradient or a five color spectrum might give. More information, particularly when almost all of these were comparing yellows to yellows, right? And there are stronger or weaker versions of those.
And also just a quick note for those of us who are red, green colorblind, um.
There's more than one reason not to use.
So I can't read it.
This is all yellow.
I know that, I know that it's yellow, but I can't tell the difference between no adverse impacts, impacts not mitigated, not reviewed. Those are all essentially the same color.
We can make those updates. It is a, this is an area where we have looked at all these other counties to just. Try to find communications materials to help our community be able to digest guide documents.
I love digital management. This is great, just, yeah.
It's it's just kind of sad, though. It's like a sad state of communication around environmental impact statements. Like we haven't been able to find a lot of resources, so yes, we can, we can look at stuff like that.
All right, well, thank you. Next up is staff updates.
Hi Maya. Um, well, I only have one big update, which many of you are probably already familiar with. We are taking the chair of the planning commission away, and so you guys are gonna have to vote on a new chair. I know. Uh, so Derek. Is uh no longer gonna be a commissioner, he's gonna be Thurston County City Community Planning. We're very excited. This will be his last planning commission meeting.
Be sitting over there?
Yeah.
And he'll be responsible for bringing the treats, so start.
I'll request vegan treats.
I like whiskey.
Did you, did you hire him at the top of the range?
I I'm not sure, disclosing that is publicly disclosable.
Um, if he wants to share that before it's available. But yeah, we're we're very excited with a very competitive process. Um, and we're looking forward to having Derek um join the team and are also. Very, very grateful to Andy um for serving as interim. Um, for these last few months of transition and community planning, so. Anyway, can I, I want to clap.
Congratulations, and I request an entire roasted pig.
Congratulations, Derek. That's awesome.
Thanks, Bill. All right, thank you, Ashley. And any other, uh, we have item numbers.
When does this take?
March seventeenth?
This is his last meeting.
First day of the pay period.
I'm wondering if what we need to do, if we need to do it now or I need to be prepared to do it at the next meeting.
Yes, I I think you should be prepared to do it next meeting and then we will have to probably call for nominations and then we can vote the following meeting.
True.
Agreed.
If you're aware of it.
Sounds great. I think, I think the new community planning.
Okay.
Should walk you through that.
Got it, okay.
I am a little bit familiar. So uh we also have a whole wealth of knowledge here around the table.
Yep.
Okay, um, moving on to item number six. Uh, Maya, do you have anything else for us on Thurston twenty forty-five?
Not on Thurston twenty forty-five. Ashley, do we want to share anything about the appeal on the ag?
Sure. Yeah, I, I referenced it just in passing, but we did get an appeal from Futurewise on the long-term agriculture zoning updates. So that should be going to pre-hearing here um very shortly with a more formal hearing before the growth management hearings board this summer. So more to come.
Can you tell us what their largest complaint was?
They did not like the outcome. I don't know. I, I, I don't know. I don't know if Maya has anything more substantive. There really wasn't a lot in the appeal. You can go and look at it on the growth.
I wish we knew.
Yeah, we really don't. Uh, they, they basically repeated most of the claims they made in their original appeal and said that all the community work that was done and all the research that was done was just not relevant. So, so we'll see. A lot of work, though, for us.
What, yeah, what's the, the different outcome that they're looking for?
More land and long-term. But wasn't, I mean, no.
There's nothing to support.
Well, just no more detail into like, well, what would that look like? I mean, there was a lot of discussion amongst the policymakers around um soil types that can support commercially significant agriculture. Um, and they, they're basically just saying any soil that is listed is prime farm land soils, regardless of whether it's co- covered in wetlands and will never be used for farming or it's got rocks this big, you know, every, what, every few inches that you can't till. Um, it should still.
We had that conversation. So you couldn't till it. Okay, tried. It was just rock.
So, yep. Let's see. I don't really think they, uh, they're not as interested in understanding the on the ground. Considerations.
All right.
That gets into a lot of differences between useful food production and commercially viable agriculture, and those are important. Both of those are important, but they are different. Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yep, they're very, they're very different. And most of the, you know, we got lots of prairie soils and it's amazing that we still have prairies left here, but you cannot till them. And, and we've had some rock star ranchers who've been able to eke out, you know, uh, living doing ranching. But that's pretty much it. Like, it's not as if you can take that land and use it for some other type of agriculture without significant investment. So.
All right. Moving on to item number seven, calendar with agenda items with tentative and our attendance. So we have two future meetings queued up here for March nineteenth and April second. So we will want to make sure that our vice chair is available for those.
Yeah, on April second, I will be out of the country, so I can join via Zoom, but uh I'll just be up in Vancouver. Um, but we'll need a vice chair at that point probably to run the meeting because it'd be hard to run it from up there on the screen.
You can also, like, if you haven't figured it out by then, uh, you can nominate a, a chair, an acting.
Okay, right. Can we just have elections on our March nineteenth?
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to have that on the agenda.
Second, they take hold.
Yep.
All right. So we'll add elections to the agenda for the nineteenth. All right. Any other attendance challenges there? Okay.
On the April second meeting, it says a work session number two for the permit review process code updates. Do you remember when the first work session on those was?
Andrew brought that to you all incredibly long time ago, and I will admit, I do not think I will be ready to bring this to you at this point. That code language, I still need to wrap the comp planning and legal, and I just think April second might be a little early. It was very, very early on the permit review process code updates is one of those docket item buckets. One of the biggest, the biggest piece of that will be the fifty-two ninety um permit review timelines. Um, it'll also include things like appeals, uh, some updates to innocent purchaser. See, for example, at some point, the approach we're taking, or I'm taking with this is kind of trying to digest it into chunks. So you'll see fifty-two ninety things, appeals, innocent purchaser, and then we'll bring back some other things later on.
Okay, if, if you do happen to run across when that first work session was, I wouldn't mind going and reviewing that material because I can't remember.
It was really high level, a sort of concept of what we think is going to be included. Um, as it relates to appeals, there was concern from the planning commission about removing the board. So that is where we're the, we've gotten guidance from the board that they would like to update appeal procedures. So things go straight to Superior Court. Um, but ju- just to remind you of the feedback we got, I think it was pretty, pretty clear that the planning commission wasn't necessarily in support of that change. Um, that is a change that once we started diving in, oh, wow, it, you gotta update so many different sections of the code. Um, and then fifty-two ninety, those one, we basically just said, these are new state mandated permit review timelines we're going to be implementing or will need to implement some process improvements. We've been adaptively managing those the last two months, um, which have been informing what's going to be in the code. So they're sort of the baseline. We need to have this in because it's new state law. And then also like, we need to make these changes if we're even going to meet these timelines. So the work session was on July tenth.
July tenth. Now, now that uh Ashley reminded me exactly what we talked about.
In SEPA, that was a community generated one where some folks wanted us to look at spending appeal deadlines, others factoring noticing or appeal deadlines. So we're just to do research, even see what the realm was. And then also um looking at SEPA exemption thresholds. We are really out of step with most other jurisdictions that we've looked at. Um, and so trying to, trying to, well, basically have higher thresholds, um, especially as it relates to housing.
Do you know if, if any of the stuff about CADs is going to come through on any of this, too?
Um, we can chat about that. We are, that is one, well, it's one of the things we're adaptively managing. And so we have shifted gears just in the last week. So no, it will not be coming through because we're not gonna.
Good.
Cat first.
Good.
But I'm happy to chat.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if anyone else even knows what a cat is. So, but don't worry, you will once we get into critical areas ordinance updates.
All right. Moving on to good of the order. Do we have any good of the order?
I'd like to thank you for doing a great job the last year and a half of sharing this and running this game.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Again.
You haven't seen the last.
Still plenty of time with us to come.
And the term of sentence is over.
It's war now. Sandy has her war face on.
All right. Well, thanks, folks. Um, there's no other good of the order. Uh, we have no other business and this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah. So on the topic of things you do on uh, on land that you farm, uh, we can, it's now commercially available.